...for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ozar, Saunders?
Here.
Zalada?
Here.
Speaks?
Here.
Coate?
Here.
Mezek?
Here.
Janutis?
Here.
I have a motion to excuse Councilman Ozar from the meeting, by Saunders, second by Janutis. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Coate?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of December 4th, 2017. Any corrections? Seeing none, we have a motion for acceptance by Mezek, second by... Second by... Speaks? Call the roll please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Coate?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of December 4th, 2017. Any corrections on that? Seeing none, and a motion for acceptance by Janutis, second by Zalada. Call the roll please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Coate?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Stewarts?
Yes.
Now comes, as most of you know that are here, one of my favorite duties, and that's our presentations. And we have two tonight. We're gonna start with a brand-new police officer. Always a good thing. Good, how you doing? Smile. It's a good thing.
This is the pretty smile.
So if you see him on the road, he's not smiling, it's okay. And welcome to the city of Bedford. Let's get in where you're swearing in, and then we'll go from there. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Kyle Dunphy.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford.
And the Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford.
And faithfully...
And faithfully.
Honestly...
Honestly.
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of patrolman...
Of the position of patrolman.
Of the City of Bedford, Ohio, so help me God.
Of the City of Bedford, Ohio, so help me God.
Congratulations. Have you wiped in the bath? Very good. And, yeah, don't go away. And if you want to introduce your family and friends, whoever's here, and...
This is my wife, Emily Heath, and her parents were good enough to come, Shirley and Alan.
And I'd just like to welcome Kyle aboard, and welcome his family for being here. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your support. And I'd like to thank City Council, Civil Service Commission, and the City Administration for making this event happen. I'm sure Kyle would like to thank former Chief Chris Neder for preparing the meeting.
Absolutely. And I'd just thank all of you, and I look forward to serving you in whatever way I can in your future.
Very good. We have one other presentation that... Kyle, before you leave...
A second.
You need your autograph. Oh, you got it, sorry.
Your autograph.
Thank you.
We need John. We're gonna do this early because we might not get through the whole thing. Well, I'll just have you stand up here. As most of you know, this is Brown's last meeting. And I haven't even read this yet. See some familiar faces out there, with Wendy Grant from Bedford Heights. Thanks for coming over. Former Mayor Dan Posick and his wife, Chrissy. And you've got family, and my wife Marilyn, the other Marilyn. Oh, here you go.
And we had Yoko come in the back room into the work session.
Oh, yep. Well, I could say, we did have Senator Kenny Uko stop in to our work session to present a proclamation to Brown from the Congress of the State of Ohio. It was very nice of him to stop by. And he mentioned he had six other places to go.
Yeah.
And Judge Michelle Perez brought her some really nice flowers.
Yes.
And I know you've got your family here, and we'll give them a chance in a minute. But let me read this while I still can. Resolution commending Marilyn Zalada for serving the City of Bedford as a councilwoman representing Ward III. Whereas Marilyn Zalada has served Ward III and the community as a whole as councilman with dedication and distinction since January 1st, 1992. I was only seven. Whereas, with many years of service, 26 years, she has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of her community as she worked constantly for the betterment of its economic, cultural, and aesthetic development. And she has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom she has come into contact and the affection of her fellow public servants, both here and around. Whereas, the Council of the City of Bedford wishes to publicly express a sincere appreciation and thanks to Marilyn Zalada for her many contributions to the community and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities and duties as a member of City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Bedford, Ohio, Kuyahoga County, and State of Ohio, that the Council of the City of Bedford hereby publicly thanks Marilyn Zalada and extend our deepest appreciation for her service to the community. The Clerk of Council is hereby authorized and directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Marilyn Zalada immediately upon its passage and adoption, which we'll do a little later. Wherefore this resolution shall be in full force and effect and immediately after its passage. Marilyn, congratulations on a job lovely. We're gonna conserve the remarks for later, you know? Well, first, we have to pass a resolution. And we're gonna do this later, or else we won't get through the meeting. Okay, we... Okay, great. We all love you, so... Have a seat, we'll do a little bit of business. All right, where did I leave my glasses? Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items I wanna touch on. Last Friday, the administration, we submitted a state capital budget request to Senator Uko's office. We are asking for some assistance to finalize all of the funding for the Union Street Connector over to Edford, for the bridge, as well as some street safety improvements down below us. So hopefully, they look favorably upon that request. I do want to remind everybody regarding the snow removal, as well as our parking ban. Anytime there's more than two inches, the Police Department has been out there. We issued a significant amount of tickets during the last storm. You know, that is a safety issue, so please, when we do have over two inches, please refrain from parking your vehicles on the street. I just wanted to also publicly thank Channel Eight and mostly Tim Taylor, you know, for their involvement in getting the City of Bedford some very positive press regarding Christmas in Bedford Falls. But also a little story that Tim did, and he's worked on that for a few months now. I think it portrayed Bedford in a great, great way. And we attached that link on the city's websites. If you haven't seen it, take a look. Well done. And I wanted to publicly thank him for that. Congrats, congratulations to Kyle, our new officer. With that being said, our police administration are continuing to go through the process to vet additional individuals for new hires. We are looking to hire three more. So hopefully, you know, based on our current list, we're able to get some individuals. And then civil service is working very diligently as well. And we may be issuing a new test sometime in February, March. So... April, okay. April Frank said. We're moving that process along. Once again, and I'm sure we're gonna hear many of it, but I wanted to commend you, Marilyn, for over 22 decades, 26 years, I think, for your service. You've done so with integrity and professionalism. And, you know, on behalf of former City Managers, I know I can speak for Hank, I know I can speak for Bob. You know, the three of us greatly appreciated all your support. I appreciate your trust and your friendship. So I wish you nothing but the best from myself and our entire administration. Thank you.
Thank you. I did get a lovely note from Mr. Hank Angelo, our previous City Manager. And Bob Reed spoke to me at something. I was at Hank Angelo. Senior moment. But Hank Angelo wrote me a lovely note, and I have, in fact, I have written one back. I have mailed it to him. He was a very good friend. So thank you to them, too.
Mr. Law Director.
I just wanna congratulate Mr. Dunphy. Welcome him to the force. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I must compare with the comments Mike has said about Marilyn. And I know that Judge Perez was here earlier, and extended her regards as Mr. Mellon does. Judge Mellon and Mr. Dave, why don't we extend best wishes as well? So good luck to you. I'm sure we'll see each other around.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Ah, yes. Congratulations to Kyle. I know I'm very pleased at our list. We will be seeing more individuals being hired from that list in the next couple of weeks. Give the chief a lot of credit, they're doing the backgrounds and doing a great job on that, making sure you get the quality officer you for this community. Marilyn, just an amazing job you've done over the years. Professional. It's been a pleasure working with you for all these years. And really appreciate your kindness and sincere appreciation for the residents and the city and the whole of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel bad, being away from you. You've received the highest honors any finance person can receive, and it was my honor to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
First again. It seems like I was just first a few weeks ago. Anyway...
Six weeks ago.
No, he's getting ready, 'cause he's not here. So, so fine. Anyhow, I wanna congratulate all those that were involved in the Christmas in Bedford Falls, for sure. That was definitely, though it may have been chilly, it was one heck of a great event. And once again, I'm really right, but Mike says Channel Eight did a heck of a job the day before on promoting it, unlike Channel Three, who did it with our square lighting and botched up their transmission and didn't cover it. But Channel Eight did an excellent job, so kudos to getting the coverage. And I hope they will continue to do so. So the Moss Man, they basically said that he would be back in the summer for some of our festivals, too. So that was encouraging news, so hopefully we can get a lot of nice PR this coming year, too. So we'll push forward. This is a great community, and we're gonna keep it that way. I wanna also wish everybody a Merry Christmas. This is our last meeting before Christmas. And also a Happy New Year. And hope to see everybody at the organizational meeting right after New Year's on the 3rd. Hopefully, everybody has a blessed Christmas and a very happy New Year, healthy one, for sure. So be careful. There are many hazards that happen during the holidays, and we wanna make sure that everybody stays safe. I also want to say that I look forward to working with the new council, who will be taking over at the next meeting. Hopefully, we will move forward and keep the city in the right direction like we have in many years past. Especially with Marilyn's help, now Marilyn's gone. It's gonna really seem strange not to have a Zalada on council, because her husband was previous. It just seems like most of my life that I grew up in Bedford, there was always a Zalada on council. I've worked with Marilyn for 20 years here on council, and she is always at her heart where it belongs. And that's a good thing. So hopefully, the successor has a thick, blue heart. He has a big set of shoes to fill, even though she has small shoes. He will, I'm sure, take over and be able to continue to work in Ward III. On that same line, last meeting, I mentioned the parking, which I did see cars ticketed. We need to start towing some of these constant violators. But the big problem now is the sidewalks and our snowplow drivers. Snowplow drivers, especially in the residential areas, that don't get out and shovel their stuff off the sidewalks. Now granted, for the next couple of weeks, there's no school. But these school kids have to walk up to the corners of the street to pick up their school buses. And they have to go into the street because they can't climb over these mountains, that's some of these snowplow drivers. I know we used to register snowplow drivers in the city. And I would assume that's one of the things that was on that registration form, that they have to get out there and clean off the walks from what they deposited their giant pounds with. I don't know if we still do that registration or not, but it would be a good idea to reiterate it, maybe in our next newsletter or something, that, you know, people keep those walks semi-clean. You know, three or four inches of snow on them is one thing, but when you've got a three-foot-high mountain over it, it gets a little hard to get around. And unfortunately, that's the case in our business district, too. You'd be surprised at how many people walk. And with this recent snow we had, how many people had to walk in the street. Fortunately, most of them are at least walking facing traffic so you can see them. But they shouldn't have to walk on the street. We have a town with sidewalks almost everywhere, and they should be respected in that. Once again, Marilyn, good luck in the future. I'm sure we'll see you a lot. I grew up down the street from you, so I've known you for a long time. So...
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Mrs. Speaks. I'm skipping Marilyn, yes. I'm not letting her talk. You don't get to talk yet.
That's fine. That's fine. Well, Marilyn, I'm gonna save mine for the end, too, 'cause I don't wanna start crying. All I wanna make is a miserable thing. You know how I feel about you. You know how I'm gonna be. I had two really special honors today. First one was being able to put together 90 gift bags, Mills on Wheels. Donna, I see, Diane, Etsy. It's such an honor to work with this group of volunteers that go beyond to give, to make these seniors' lives. So not just taking a mail and making sure they have a hot meal, but what they've done for Christmas. They gave socks and hats and cookies and ladies baked, and everybody brought something, and puzzles and just different things. And just, what a great organization and a group that I am so honored to be a part of. It is just your blessing to the city. I spoke to y'all today just to tell y'all how dear y'all are to our heart and just how great y'all are for our city. And I thank each and every one of you, Mills on Wheels, for giving your time each week, each day, to do this, to make a little special day, moment, for these seniors. Little things go a long way. I've been blessed to work with seniors for 36 years. I started when I was 30. Just joking, y'all are supposed to laugh. And the other one that I had was Kenny Uko came in because he had so many things to date. So he went in and gave me proclamation for my reelection. So that was an honor to have that. That was very nice for Senator Uko to do that. So that was two honors. I also wanted to congratulate our new police officer. Congratulations to Kyle. And also Channel Eight, I got the honor to meet the Moss Man. And by talking to him, we had mutual friends, and the mutual friend mentioned that I liked to cook. And the Moss Man remembered, he said that I was, "Oh, you're Sandy from the south that can cook." So he's invited me to come on the show on Channel Eight on January the 25th. So I will be cooking with the Moss Man. And I'll follow you on there also in February, March, as well. So they're gonna have to do some Louisiana cooking, and of course, the mayor said I needed subtitles to go along. So that's gonna be fun, and it's, you know, it's a positive thing, 'cause I'm sure I won't have long, but I'll be able to give a little bit of a shout-out to our city on how great it is living here and everything. So it's an honor to be invited and to be able to promote our city a little bit more on however I can. And like I said, Marilyn, I'm gonna save mine to the end. You know that I love you, and you're my hero. Love you. And report.
This is Mezek.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see a beautiful crowd again. And I know that most of you are my sidekick, Marilyn, but that's okay, because when the mayor was reading the proclamation, I said to the City Manager, "They should have had Marilyn stand up on the dais so she could look over at him."
He raised that chair way up.
Congratulations to our new officer. That's one less we have to worry about to keep our streets safe. Proud of our... The group that does the interviewing of everybody, the Full Service Committee, that they have chosen gentlemen or female ladies that are going to do a good job for our city. And hopefully, we will have a female officer soon, that's a hint, but only the tests will tell. We didn't have any calls during the snowstorm. We were very, very happy that the plowing was done. Most people did their sidewalks, made it easier for everybody to walk around, including the mailman. And other than that, I wanna say, let's give Marilyn my best. And I'll tell you, Marilyn and I did a lot of things together. The friends of 1976, when we did the bicentennial for the City of Bedford with Mayor Posick and his wife. We looked on a wagon, got down at Mezek's Stables at the end of Bedford Reservation, which was emcee of the admiral. And if you didn't know the man at that time, because he was the proprietor of the territory back there, he went after you. Little teeny knife, and he thought he was the most powerful Superman in the world that was gonna go after you. We did have to clean up after a couple of the horses he'd given us for the parade, but we did it well on that. That's when Marilyn and I met. We've been friends ever since. I share a birthday with her and her special friend, Rose, that she went to school with forever and ever. And on my birthday, I know Marilyn's on the other side of the phone, because I... Hi, Marilyn. Yes, I have Brittany and Melon. When it comes to February, happy birthday back and forth, but I'll tell you one thing. We used to go to trips to the city, to Washington, DC. Marilyn was my roommate. The best part of Marilyn being a roommate, she didn't snore. And I remember taking the glasses off her head every night. Time to pull the magazine that she had clenched to her chest and saying, "Goodnight, Marilyn. We'll see you in the morning." And I'll see you soon, because we're not gonna end here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna wish everybody in the world peaceful holiday season and Happy New Year. I think it would be, I don't know how we could arrange to make this happen, but I think I would love to see Vic try to get into Marilyn's shoe.
He can.
Like Cinderella. Get in the shoe, and maybe you'll have to re-vote or something. And also, Sandy, if you would, you know, wanna accept an additional honor, that you could come over to cook at my house. But when it comes to Marilyn, I'm in denial. I'm really not going to even accept that she's not gonna be here next to me until the next meeting, when I look and, you know, she's not there, then it'll hit me. So until then, I just pretend like this isn't happening.
I have to say that.
But I learned, I really learned a lot from Marilyn, and I hope that if I could one day be a Marilyn Zalada, not be here for 26 years, but at least be considered such a gracious and wonderful exemplary citizen in Bedford. So, thanks a lot, Marilyn. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Thank you.
Dooms. And I just get to echo all those accolades. You've been great. And I sat in Molly's seat there for 13 years with you next to me, and got a lot of guidance and tutoring from you. I appreciate all that. And just being a friend, going way back to when our kids were in school together.
That's right, yeah.
Long, long time. Right, Johnny? All you've done for the city, I just can't say enough. You are, without a doubt, the hardest person, the hardest-working person on City Council.
I used to be. Thank you.
Well, you've done more, when you could get around more, you did more than anybody. You were such a valuable asset to your Ward III. I hope all the people there realize the, what you did. You never turned down a call. Middle of the night, whenever. You were out there doing it, and you did what you had to do when you had to do it. And that says a lot about you as a person. Love you, and I can't say a whole lot more. I'll be far behind you on that, so... We're gonna move on. You don't get to talk till the end. Ordinance number 9545.
Amending ordinance number 9443-16, making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year 2017, declaring emergency.
We have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Mezek. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Coate?
Yes.
Mezek?
Yes.
Stewarts?
Yes.
Motion for third and final. Spin, second by Zalada.
Can I go over this ordinance? This is our final ordinance of the year for 17 to adjust the numbers. We took a look at the budget. We moved my funds here and there just to cover some immediate needs that we have that have come up. And we've also taken a look at some of our grants and our demolitions and adjustments. and adjusted for those, our seal funds for our narcotics group that have been confiscated throughout the year, grant funds that have been obtained recently and we're updating that to the end of the year. We gotta do that for, for the higher vice code. And at that point, that's pretty much what's in here. So ask council to pass that this evening so that we'll be in compliance with the Ohio law budget.
You wanna do that? Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five forty-six dash seventeen.
Amending ordinance number ninety-four twenty-one dash sixteen concerning section nine thirteen point zero-two of our code entitled sewer rates, as related sewer rates and declaring an emergency.
You have a motion for suspension by Spink, second by Salata. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders.
The next two ordinances are in regards to the sewer rates. For 2018, we are not gonna have a water rate increase, but the sewer fund does need the funds to keep up with its coverages and costs of operations of that plant. So therefore, this evening, I'd ask council to increase the rates four percent of sewer rates and in proportion to the discounted rates for the senior citizens of permanently disabled that I have mentioned here in the ordinance.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Mayor, I would like to make note because we take effect February first, not January first.
Thank you. Ordinance number ninety-five forty-seven dash seventeen.
Amending ordinance number ninety-four twenty-two dash sixteen concerning section nine thirteen point zero-three entitled rate reduction for senior citizens and the permanently disabled of our codified ordinances of our city as related to sewer rates and declaring an emergency.
You have a motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Bezek. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Salata, second by Spinks. Frank, you already touched on that. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five forty-eight dash seventeen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Eric's, I don't know how to say, Eric's Environmental Management Services, Inc., for asbestos abatement at Ellenwood Recreation Center and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spink, second by Janutis. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders. Who wants to speak?
That's okay. This is, as the ordinance indicates, a contract for asbestos abatement. We did a study about a month and a half ago within the building to find out what areas would need. There's some areas of the ceiling that we want to get addressed before they could become any type of harm. We went ahead and received multiple quotes for that abatement. The quotes came in within seventy-five dollars of one another. It's our recommendation that we go with Eric's, the company that the law director had indicated. They're gonna come in, they'll tear down portions of the ceiling that need to get abated and all of that become addressed. And the goal is to utilize that building much more than we're currently utilizing it. And we want to make sure that everything is in good working order before we look to increase programming and other things at the center. And this will be the first step.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders. Frank?
The judge of the court and the corporate court has stated his salary for next year 2018 is he tries to keep equal to eighty-five percent of the judge's salary, which compensates to equivalency of an elected official of corporate court salary. Cost of the city of Bedford will be approximately fifteen percent. Sixty percent is borne by the city, however, when that's allocated out to the other thirteen communities, that shares approximately twenty-five percent of that. So in that, he talks about fifty percent of his compensation package.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
No.
Ordinance number ninety-five fifty dash seventeen.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease purchase agreement with Huntington Public Capital Corporation to finance the purchase of a Pitney Bowes Sun Pro P Series postage machine system and a Relay 3000 inserting system and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Bezek. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
No.
Ordinance number ninety-five fifty dash seventeen.
How many years was that? Okay, it was like, I mean, eighty-five more. Got you.
Ordinance number ninety-five fifty dash seventeen.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a lease purchase agreement with Huntington Public Capital Corporation to finance the purchase of a Pitney Bowes Sun Pro P Series postage machine system and a Relay 3000 inserting system and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Spink. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spink, second by Saunders. Frank, you wanna talk about that?
The next three ordinances are related to each other. The first identifies the funding mechanism for the next two items. City's looking to buy the postage machines for Pitney Bowes and also buying the folding machine, which is our inserter, which basically is inserts papers into envelopes and we use it throughout the whole city, all of the court, whoever comes over and uses it. So it's got, picks up quite a bit in our tax department. And speaking of which, a reminder, I have those letters going out again, remind everyone to pay their bills in the fifteenth, in December, so that you can take the tax deductions. But in regards to this ordinance, we found it cheaper, less expensive to lease from Huntington for these items, a small dollar amount at three point one percent, rather than go through the leasing mechanism of Pitney Bowes or any other. So at this point, we've kept the rate as low as possible and purchased these machines to keep that cost down also as well. And so this compensation package, not compensation, but financing package, since we studied it in June, they go in the back and forth trying to get that down as much as possible. And as it turns out, we will have free use of the machinery we have now through February. February, we'll obtain the new equipment and we won't pay on this till 2019. So right now, that's a pretty good package. So I ask council to approve it.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five fifty-one dash seventeen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the new postage machine and equipment and software maintenance agreement from Pitney Bowes and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Bezek, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spink, second by Salata. Frank?
Just to clarify one item, within the postage machine is the actual meter itself. You can't own the meters because they're not something they allow you to own, no matter what company votes you. So we will be leasing that separate for the cost of the meter, but we will have the machine itself leased and purchased throughout the three-year time. We're paying off this machinery starting in 2019.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders. Same thing, this goes along with the earlier. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders. Same thing, this goes along with the earlier. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Number I under new business, I am gonna flip down to the end of the page. A resolution number twenty-five twenty dash seventeen.
A resolution authorizing the city to hold a ceremonial organizational meeting on January third, 2018 and declaring an emergency.
That's a simple answer, no?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Need to, Frank. Need a motion to change the meeting by Saunders, second by Bezek. We're having our organizational meeting on January third because the first is the holiday, second is the recognized holiday for the city and so not to have to pay overtime for everybody to come in. We're having it on the third, so that will be on a Wednesday, so mark your calendar. Wednesday, the third, will be the officials swearing in, the new council people and the older council people that get re-elected. Please, please come. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders. Same thing, this goes along with the earlier. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Bezek, second by Saunders. Same thing, this goes along with the earlier. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Number I under new business, I am gonna flip down to the end of the page. A resolution number twenty-five twenty dash seventeen.
A resolution authorizing the city to hold a ceremonial organizational meeting on January third, 2018 and declaring an emergency.
That's a simple answer, no?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Need to, Frank. Need a motion to change the meeting by Saunders, second by Bezek. We're having our organizational meeting on January third because the first is the holiday, second is the recognized holiday for the city and so not to have to pay overtime for everybody to come in. We're having it on the third, so that will be on a Wednesday, so mark your calendar. Wednesday, the third, will be the officials swearing in, the new council people and the older council people that get re-elected. Please, please come. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis? Yes.
No, that was, okay, that was dangerous. That was to suspend the rolls, two, 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 one more. All right. We need a third and final. Saunders, second by Bezek. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
Thank you. A motion.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the motion.
Yes, can we get a motion to accept the recommendation of the December fifth, 2017 Planning Commission approving Amerio Real Estate Company located in Phoenix, Arizona, requesting to use the structure located at one-nine-zero-zero Rockside as an interior self-storage, U-Haul, truck and trailer share and retail sales on the condition that they moved it to solidate the current location to the new location within the next, within a reasonable amount of time and that any requests for outside storage be located in the rear, not along Rockside Road.
Outside storage.
Correct. Well, we'd like outside storage to be in the back of the building.
Okay.
Do we get a motion to approve that?
Motion by Spink, second by Janutis. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Salata?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochie?
Yes.
Bezek?
Yes.
Janutis?
Yes.
The property in question there was the old Tim Lally property. He was looking to purchase. Number L.
Yes, sir. Motion to accept the, can I get a motion to accept the recommendation of the December fifth, 2017 Planning Commission approving Young Custom Homes in Rimado, of Buck, Ohio, seeking to construct a twenty-foot by forty-foot old carport to replace the carport that was damaged beyond repair at the Slate Run Apartments located at four-fifty Turney Road. Motion to that effect.
Motion by Mizaq, second by Saunders. Mike, do you want to say anything again?
That was a structure that was simply damaged and they're reconstructing what was previously at that site. It's a carport.
Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
Uh, letter M.
Motion to accept the recommendation of December fifth, twenty seventeen Planning Commission, uh, application of Byron Green, uh, six sixty Columbus Road, requesting the Varions to build a thirty-foot by forty-foot pole barn garage, which was approved by the commission.
Motion to do so, like Janus, second by Spinks. Mike, again, you wanna?
Mr. Green, uh, has a significantly large piece of property, he has, um, recreational and other, uh, vehicles that he would like to store on that site, our building commissioner was out, um, and given the amount and the size of the property, it's not going to be along the roadway, uh, it will be set back, um, a reasonable amount of space and recommended and feels comfortable approving it, um, spoke to the council members while in the area and, um, it's sufficient and we would recommend it.
Question, call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
Uh, number, letter N.
Yes, can we get a motion to accept the recommendation of the December fifth, twenty seventeen Planning Commission of Reed Harris of Walton Hill, seeking a daycare and learning center located at seven seven six Broadway Avenue, which was denied by the Planning Commission for several reasons, um, most of which related to safety concerns, the, the, as to the location was not ideal for a, a daycare, uh, there's no play area for the children, and parking was an issue, and it's, uh, close to an industrial area, you know, behind, there's a lot of traffic, uh, traffic issues, so. And they also were not present for the meeting, so the commission denied it, so if you agree with their recommendation, you still, uh, denying the application, you go yes. Of the first, new motion.
Motion Spinks, second by Zalada. All roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
And, motion O.
Yes, to accept the recommendation of the December fifth, twenty seventeen Planning Commission of Mr. Syracuse of Solon, Ohio, seeking approval for our prospective tenant, Katie Daly, to open a boutique in the downtown, uh, district for retail sale, sales of hair wigs located at seven eighteen Broadway Avenue. They did approve that, uh, application.
Motion to accept by Zalada, second by Janus. That is with the, the caveat that it is strictly, uh, retail salesmen, not a hair salon.
Yes, sir. Stan? Yes?
May I ask one question? Did this have to go in front of the historic preservation board to make sure they don't put some wacky neon lights around the windows or something of that nature?
Um, if they decide to change the way, and I'm sure they will, uh, have to go before the board.
Even before they went in, signed all that, they would have to go in front of the board, I don't believe they're in front of them, they haven't requested.
They haven't gotten that far, okay. Alright, thank you, you supposed to go first. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
No.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
Third P.
Visiting our planning commission, that's good, a lot of things happening. Motion to accept the recommendation of December twelfth, uh, special planning commission meeting, approve a construction, uh, of Norton, Ohio, representing owner, uh, Jimmy Marcelino of Motor Cars, Acura, Volvo, uh, ARM, Armed Performance Group LLC, proposing a major renovation of the existing Volvo showroom to include a new five hundred and twenty-eight square foot addition located at one eight one twenty-three Rock Side Road, which was approved by the commission.
And motion to, uh, accept by Spinks, second by Zalada. This is a good thing, it'll be one of the last few dealers to start remodeling, uh, the stores.
Correct, they were, um, Mr. Marcelino, um, was, you know, who's not the owner, uh, he, this property was leased, however, he was able to acquire the property with purchase and is now looking at, uh, major, um, a major investment and multiple improvements, stages of improvements, this is the first one, um, there's only about, actually, two other dealerships that have yet to renovate their facility, both have plans on the, on the table to do so, so this will be the last, uh, major renovation for the outline.
Call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Don.
Yes, one quick question, uh, parts of that property were bought from the residential homes and there was restrictions that no structures be put on, it was strictly to be used for parking, where is this addition going?
Off of the drawings that was in the memo, it's just to the right, it's not in the rear of the property.
Okay.
Near those homes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
Number I.
Yes, sir. The, uh, being a resolution commending Marilyn B. Zalada for serving the city of bed for this councilwoman representing Ward three.
Motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janus. Question on that one? Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalada?
Yes.
They have to say.
No. Spinks?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Mizaq?
Yes.
Janus?
Yes.
Marilyn.
Oh, it's not true?
You, you have a mess now.
Well, please excuse me if I do refer to notice, 'cause I'm a little bit jumpy this one today. I had been really sad about this last meeting, really sad, but then decided that I was being foolish. As the day approached, I realized that there is a good and a bad time for everything. It is my last meeting and it should be, because of all the good, really good things have come to an end, have come to an end, and, and, and this truly was one of my very best experiences, excluding experiences with my family. It's been a long agenda tonight and I don't wanna lengthen it any further for you, but our friendship, um... One of my friends here tonight, actually, he was an ex-mayor, told me that I talk too much and too long. I'll never let him weigh that down, you know, in a lot of those things, you know. Another said, that it could be longer or shorter than my citizen of the year is the of response, and I said, well, we'll wait and see, probably be shorter, I hope so anyhow. To close with this, every department has made my tenure here successful and pleasant, and I mean that sincerely. They are the heroes in this city, they really are, the police, the fire, the firemen, I will bring, uh, bring them out particularly, they have been wonderful to me and my family. They are cheerful, they come in when my husband needs some help, and they're very, very kind and put my fears to rest, and, and they've been wonderful, so, every department, everyone, and of course, the administration and the council, these people up here are my comrades, we have worked together, and it was mentioned tonight that when a good thing goes down, we want it to go down from all of us, we don't want one person to stand out, we've never done that in our community, we've all worked together, struggled together, sometimes not always happily, but necessarily, let's put it that way. Uh, we have a, a successful city, yes, I said successful, it could be worse, I know a lot of cities, cities more inclusive, more affluent than ours, who don't have the camaraderie or the, uh, good things that are happening to us, we all are gonna have our ups and downs and we still will, so don't ever expect that everything's going to be perfect all the time, I sometimes did that and I was wrong, of course, you know, we do have to have our ups and downs. We have, as I mentioned, a fine, award-winning, uh, finance director here, we have a wonderful city manager, and the mayor and council are beyond comprehension, I mean, they're beyond anything that I have always worked with, I have always received their respect, you know, you hear a lot of things going on now about men and women, you know, and all that, I have the utmost respect given to me, and I certainly respect that. Changing some words from an old-time president long ago, one of my favorites, ask not, and I'll change the word in a little bit, ask not what you can do for your city, ask what, or what they can do, your city can do for you, excuse me, ask what you can do for your city, and on that note, I would like to thank everybody in this city who volunteers their time, Dot, it was a wonderful weekend, uh, for the, for the business of Bedford Falls, everything, yeah, uh, Dinah and Don with the, um, Meals on Wheels, I mean, I could go right down, I served on the historical committee, all these organizations, all of them, do for this city, please help them in the future, they deserve our help, 'cause I think we do really have a good city, and, um, we can keep it that way, it's up to us, and, um, accept change, there might be some change, there has been some change, we know that, thank you for all the people that have, Wendy, thank you for being here, everybody in the historical society, thank you for being here, um, I, I still am willing to give my services, not quite as much, maybe, but I still wanna be involved, because I don't wanna just not have anything to do, you know, I always have something to do, but you know, to be involved in our city, so please just always, uh, don't forget that we all work together and we'll all make it work in our city, okay, and thank you all for being here, oh, my friends, Chris and Dan, well, I already mentioned, my friend Chrissy, Chrissy Fosa, and, uh, like I said, Don and, and her husband, um, just so many people, I'm afraid Marilyn Cochi gave us the honor of being here tonight, 'cause she usually has her own meeting on Monday night, and she gave it up for me, and now, if I may just introduce a couple members of my family, um, uh, let's see, where do I start?
Why don't they come up?
Yeah, why don't you?
We're gonna put you guys up.
We're not all here, but some of them are here, and I...
You guys, I'd like to say something.
Wait.
This is my oldest. This is my oldest son, Andy, my one and only oldest son, Andy, um, these are, this is Laura and Larry, the, the twins, and, um, where's, oh, John, he's my youngest, with his wonderful wife, Diane, and they are absolutely, all of these kids, well, kids, you know what I mean, young people are certainly in my corner and go out of their way to help me every chance they get, and, um, it's been a little rough, I have to admit, but God knew what he was doing, my one son says, it was time for you to retire, and definitely was time, but, um, I tried to hang in there till the end, and, uh, I, I loved my job, and I don't even wanna go into it anymore, because I really have loved my job, and all the candidates that ran for my job, they were all great people, they really, really were, and I, I purposely didn't go out of my way to name one, because I wanted to show them all that I appreciated their efforts, stay involved, and especially you young guys, they'll get there someday, uh, but these are all my young guys, and, um, my daughter is missing, my daughter and her husband, Scott, Sesni, the chiropractor, uh, they have my three grandchildren, and they have a million things going, I didn't expect them to be here, and, um, um, let's see, who else?
Michael.
Michael, oh, Michael, yeah. So there's six total, and I appreciate all they do, I could just ramble on and on, I don't wanna, as I said, I don't wanna make this meeting any longer for you, it's a busy week for all of us, but you can't imagine the gratefulness I feel for having all of you here, and your comments and your gifts, as we said before, Michelle Perez from the Court was here, Kenny Yuko from the US Senate was here, plus all my wonderful friends up here, I'm so grateful, Betsy Lee from the Historical Society, Randy Grant from the City, I mean, I, I don't wanna forget anybody, so I'm not gonna say any more, which you know that, and, I see, I keep saying it, thank you all, Joyce, thank you, thank you everybody.
Let everybody in here.
I just wanted to say that this was a tough time for my mom, I know this meeting tonight was very hard for her, it was hard for her to, you know, to step down, um, and with my mom a lot, so, um, we talked about it a lot, I told her if she wanted to run again, that I would definitely help her, but when we really stopped and to think about it, we knew this was the right time for her, I know she's gonna miss everybody here a lot, um, Mike Malice, um, Stan Cochi, um, Sandy, everybody, you guys have been phenomenal, I know I've talked to you guys a lot, um, about this, and, uh, I just wanna thank everybody, Mom, you did a great job, and I'm very proud of you, thank you.
Sandy?
I'm trying to do this without crying. Couple years ago, I got Marilyn addicted to, uh, these fruit jams, so I was trying to wrack my brain to think of, uh, an appropriate thing to give her as a, not a goodbye gift, 'cause it's not goodbye, 'cause you're gonna get sick of Sandy, I've got all kinda plans for you, but I just wanted to give her a little something, just to show her how much I love her and appreciate her, and how much I admire her, she was the first person that I spoke to about what do you think about me running for council, and she took her time and spoke to me and tell me what she thought, and told, told me I do a good job, and I just hope that I can be half the councilperson that you have been, and I admire you, and it just, I've learned a lot from you, and I will continue to learn from you, and I just wanted to give you a little something and to tell you how much I appreciate you, and how much I love you. Stand up, Marilyn.
Spinks also cooked us dinner tonight, so thank you, Sandy.
Mom, I gotta get home today.
Especially if I shoot a barrel, Mary Kelly birthday.
Thank you, really made my week, everybody, thank you, and Merry Christmas, I forgot to say that.
I don't, I don't think we're done yet, but we'll, we'll open up for the hearing of citizens, which, as you know, please come forward, say your name, address, and your comment, and tonight especially, we wanna, gotta be brief, 'cause I think there might be a lot of people on this stage.
Good evening, everyone, Mrs. Cochi, out of respect, would you like to come host? No? Good evening, everyone, happy holidays. Reverend Pamela M. Pinkney Butts, five eighteen Northfield Road, Suite C one oh three, in Bedford. Before I go on to anything else, I just wanna say, wow. You're not just beautiful to the eye, but you're a lady, you're a leader, you're a woman, and you paved the way for us. I just moved here in June, and you made a tremendous impact on me, you're not brutish, you're not boisterous, you really are a beautiful person, and I am so blessed to have the privilege and the honor to even be in the company of Judge June Muriel Capers, who I've never heard her say one negative thing about anybody, not her enemies or anybody, you know, Cochi, you put me in the eye of her, I thank the Holy Spirit for allowing me to be in your presence, and it's wonderful that you're being loved as you leave this position, but I'll never forget you. And you also let me know that marriage works, I'm not married, I would like to be, but there are so many fallacies about marriage and women working that are married, you've shown me that it does work, you can still be a leader in your home and outside of it. Except the Lord and Lady, this is for you, uh, councilwoman, we said, Lord and Lady build the house, they labor in vain to build it, except the Lord and Lady keep the city, the watchman and watchwoman waited, but in vain. My name is Reverend Pamela M. Pinkney Butts, and I am the woman who did the invocation for the National Women's March this year, two thousand seventeen, January in Public Square, the opening speech, and walk the walk, saying, women have a voice and women have a choice, the meeting has been long, so I won't belabor what I really came here to say this evening, but I did want to say to you, not only happy holidays, but I noticed something that has taken place twice, uh, city manager, where people think that you're asleep, they took the gas station from you, didn't notify you, and you mentioned something else, that somebody came behind and called themselves just gonna bully your city, well, I'm here today to tell you, Mary Cochi, the thing that messed up Moses was anger, Joshua, fear, stand watch on the city, don't let anybody think that you sleep, 'cause you're not, you're wide awake. Now, and I appreciate the gospel of Jesus Christ, and I'm also, in the political world, I was born into it, and I am seated in the seat of the eleventh District Congressional Caucus, House of Representatives, which comes from the Marshall of Utes now, and I'm seated in that position for two thousand and eighteen, and one of my reasons is because women still don't have a voice, and women still don't have a choice. In the Calvert County Committee meeting on December the fifth, I frightened some people, not intentionally, but Resolution twenty seventeen, uh, two sixteen talks about license plates that are going to be, um, and cameras that are going to be pinpointing some things, and I, I call unto you, Mayor Cochi, I actually even like you as a friend, really, to challenge that and to see how this is gonna affect this city, you have a very, very beautiful city, powerful, positive, not holding racism, sexism, and other entities, but that resolution also is founded on, uh, on a law from eighteen hundred, and also, it also is impacted by the thirteenth amendment of the United States Constitution, which is also known as the pro-slavery amendment, the Corbin Amendment, the Ghost Amendment, and we need to see, you just hired a new police officer, and anytime you need police, and you have a concern for the city. I heard you mention public transportation. I heard you mention public transportation. I hope to see at least some of you council members in. And I know you probably don't want to be here tomorrow, but our Chairboard meeting is every third Tuesday of the month, and I need to see you all there. I do need to see you all there. And as I take my seat, when you talk about the sewer rates, I'd like to know, sir, how often the city water is cleaned and is purified? Like check for the pollutants that come from other areas into the city. And not now, because we're trying to go home. And the Azvestos ordinance, 9548, the Azvestos Abatement, City Manager. Could you also look and see about mold and lead and other components in these buildings? And I was glad that you all shot down the daycare, because there's a lot more that needs to be addressed about that. And, Mary Kochi, my book got a little beat up. I was going to give it to you all, City Council. I wrote this book. And it's on Amazon.com. It has all the issues, plural issues. I pray that each of you have a blessed, a safe, and prosperous this season, because people have gone crazy. They really have. One of my concerns with the daycare was going to be domestic violence. And how many of these children are components of this factor? This is my speaking out at the National Women's March, and the International Women's March. Tonight as you go home, please, everybody in this room, don't take Councilwomen's or House's presents for granted. Please don't take their presents for granted. My dad said, "When someone has a title, you call them by that, because they've earned it." I call you by your title, Mary Kochi. Keep being the watchman for the city. God bless you.
Thank you.
Dan Pokes, 16985 Walton Road, Walton Hills. Marilyn, you know, of all people, served 16 years with you. And you and Paula, Don came to me on that fateful day when Don Grossinaw passed away, asked me to run for mayor. And you were my guiding light through those 16 years. Always could count on your advice, whether I wanted or not. You know, you may be small in stature, but your legacy is immense. And dear, you are truly Bedford. You're truly Bedford. And God bless you, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're the first one on Mayor Cryer's list.
And what's short of you, your acceptance speech or something?
I pose you a steward, 93, I'm on, I'll make it quick too, but Lights Out for Hunger is Wednesday, so I've got to come up here and remind everyone, if they would, to turn off their lights in honor of the campaign to raise money for the Southeast Clergy Hunger Center. And light that flash in board with our little lights, which is even like our trademark, looks fabulous. Lights Out for Hunger Center, people say, "Hey, you're on the market." So the city's been great about publicity, as usual. So thank you very much. I have more information if anyone wants. But most people in this audience have heard me speak before. Marilyn, I just love a lady with spunk. You and I have just always hit it off. We tell it like it is. We've done a lot of things together over time, and I know retirement is a different kind of thing. Scary, but it's exciting. And whatever you do and whatever you touch, it will be special. So wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Hi, dear. Dinah Moewen, I live at 1226 Broadway. And matter of fact, I live in Marilyn Zalata's house. We moved in five years ago, and within a few weeks, Marilyn came and knocked down the door and said, "Why are you in my house? This is the house I always wanted to buy." It's one of the few ranch houses in Bedford. But we were lucky enough to grab it before she could get it. I have been also fortunate enough to be the manager of the Southeast Clergy Meals on Wheels program. And we wanted to make real quick, we have a certificate of appreciation from Southeast Clergy Meals on Wheels, wishes to thank Marilyn Zalata for 25 years of devoted support to our mission, providing nutritious meals to area seniors, convalescent, handicapped, chronically or temporarily ill persons, or unable to shop or prepare meals for themselves. Because of people like you, that's why we've been around for 41 years. December 18th, 2017.
Thank you, Dinah. I wouldn't give them more, don't worry. And out of steam. Thank you, Dinah, and the Meals on Wheels Organization.
Great group. Anyone else? Step forward, please.
It's Novak, 1252 Broadway, Ward 3. We're all going to make this short and sweet. Thank you for your service to the ward and to the community. We all love you.
Thank you, Rich.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Spiker, 20 Water Street. Marilyn, I just want to say again, Tacko, Rich's sentiments, thank you for everything that you've done for the city of Bedford and for Ward 3. Our family go back to give back way back, back into the 70s. And I just want to say I thank each and every one of your family and everything for everything that you've done for the city. Thanks, everyone.
Soon as we're done here, we got some cake out there. Where we took her picture with it, so you can... Anybody else? We gave her ample time, and maybe her have a final thought. You know, after 26 years of sitting there...
I probably have lots of final thoughts, but I don't have...
Yeah, you know, if we have some more, we'll have a glass of wine and talk lots more of them sometime.
Absolutely. I loved being with the city. I wish all you the very best. And of course, I'll see you, like I'm leaving forever.
It's not a eulogy.
I'll just miss being in this position. It's just special. And I wish you the very best. And Heather, oh, there she is, the very best, very best. And I'm there if you ever need to talk to me, but I don't think you will. You think you've got it all under control. Thank you. Thank you again, everybody, my family.
Marilyn, you have the last parting word. I'll be the driver if you got my message. I was her chauffeur for about the last 20 and a half months to get to the meeting on time. And every time I did a bump, she'd go, "Oh, I can't move," and I'd go, "Oh, my God, here we go." We made it here, and we made it home. And I enjoyed doing it. And every time I ask you, you say, "How much did you have?"
Well, it's been a...
I'm Mr. David.
Well, it's been very different. Well, many years, she went back to '76. Well, that's when my husband was on council. And I remember that bicentennial celebration. But then, we had another one in, what year was it? The Five Communities of Bedford and Chuck St. John and I put on that bicentennial.
87.
87.
87.
Yeah.
In the 80s, I guess.
I don't remember what day it was, but we, Chuck St. John and I worked very closely on it. And we had shirts made up, we had mugs made up, we were down on the square at every... Party in the park.
We had the parade too with them.
Yep. And every, almost, I swear to God, every resident bought a shirt that said Bedford Bicentennial, it was bicentennial.
Do you know who we could add? We could add our former mayor, because he's a historian. What year was it?
I think it was the early 90s, because that was off comfort.
Both Dan, you and I were wrong.
Then we had a parade, a parade down the park. And all the council people dressed up like old-time city people. And I pushed Don Grossinaw in a wheelchair. I pushed him. And I really should mention before I go that Don was my mentor. And he was a very, very good man, very good man. And he was, when I first got on council, I was, of course, delighted.
They both smoked. You were in it.
Well, I smoked a little bit then, but I haven't been a long time. And he, I said, "Oh, I'm glad I won, I won. How did I have the blimp?" "How about I do?" So I think the council people coming in are a little more educated than I was on the subject. But because of Don and Dan and a lot of good people, even you, Stan, well, you weren't on when I got on, but I certainly got to know all of you very, very well. And you were all my mentors. And I thank all of you for what you've done for me. I mean, you know, I hear what I've done, but you people have made it. You've made the experience wonderful and memorable and enjoyable. And I'll never find another one like it. And so, thank you all again. I don't want to hold anybody up. We've been here long enough.
Marilyn, would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I guess.
Saunders?
Yes.
Zalata?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kochi?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Nudis?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming and stay for cake.